Everyone, to our weekly business meeting. It is November 8th, 2022. The time is 2:01 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Philios, and Duncan. And would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. And Brandy, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, folks. And hopefully, everybody has voted or they plan to vote before 8 o'clock tonight. Very important American tradition. So let's be involved in our local governance here. All right. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Then we, I will accept a motion to approve the meeting minutes, 1 through 5.
Go ahead, Bill.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes, items 1 through 5.
Second.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. And now, the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, which on our agenda is, includes items 6 through 13.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. And now, the payables list.
I move that we approve the payables list for October 31st to November 4th, 2022, in the amount of $1,111,145,000. Whoop.
Start over.
Excuse me, let me start again. Payables for $1,144,639,056 cents.
Second.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. All right. Our first items, 15 and 16 are, can kind of be handled together. They are offers to purchase tax-deed properties. And at an open meeting, we had discussed this with Community Development. And these particular parcels are owned by the county. And so, we'll go ahead and open the bids, but it's not, the county property is not for sale. So, is Mr. Hart here? Okay. So, I don't know if you want to open them, Chris, or you want me to open them?
Yeah, I'll open them.
Okay. So, the first one is AIN 132203. And there's Mr. Hart that has made the bids.
Yes, so this is a bid for Mr. Trevor Hart. And the bid is for $300.
Yeah, so once again, this particular property is owned by the county. Federal funds were used to mitigate the property because it is in a flood zone and it's subject to routine flooding. So, do that one.
And so, the next sealed bid is 108083, and that is the AIN. And this is also for Mr. Trevor Hart. Once again, in the amount of $300.
Yep. So, I would suggest that this board deny sale of those two properties. And actually legally, and I'm not even sure we can sell those properties because of the ties to the flooding and the federal mitigation. So, I would take a motion to that.
Okay, so I move that we accept the bids for, and these are sealed bids, for AINs 132203 and 108083, both by the same party, which is Mr. Trevor Hart. And at the same time, suggest that we not accept these bids for the reasons just stated by Chairman Leslie Duncan.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Just making clarification that these properties are not for sale. So, okay. That was 15 and 16. And item 17 is Board Approval Request for Seal Coat and Stripes, 6 Parking Lots. And this is a five-year budgeted item. And our Director Manley has been up at 3:00 AM for the last two days plowing snow. So, he asked me to handle these two items. They are budgeted for in this budget season. And his latest quote came in about $12,000 to $13,000 less than what was budgeted. So, he's asking for confirmation to move forward on the seal coat and striping of the six parking lots. Any questions?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, motion?
I move that we approve the request to seal coat and stripe six parking lots.
Second.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. All right, motion passes. And then, item 18 is a Board Approval Request. And this is the repaving of the Judge's Parking Lot. And once again, this is budgeted from the five-year plan in this current year's budget. And then, both the previous item and this item, they won't be done until spring. But the approval needed to happen now to get on the contractor's schedule. So, any questions on repaving the Judge's Lot?
Yeah, I do. Isn't this where you're suggesting we put a Justice Building?
It was where the original standalone Justice Building was going to go. But now that it is, it's moved to the lot between the gas station and the Justice Center, no, the Judge's Lot will remain.
Okay.
In perpetuity. Okay.
Okay, I will move therefore that we approve the request to repave the Judge's Parking Lot, previously approved in accordance with the five-year plan. End of motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. So, item 19, MOU update, Kootenay Amateur Radio Society, Inc., and our 911. Mr. McRoy?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Colin McRoy, for the record, County Sheriff's Office. This is an update with Kootenay County Amateur Radio Society, or CARS. They have some equipment up in Canfield, a repeater. It's been there for many years. We've had this MOU with them. We do not charge them for the space. The agreement was that they would go annually each year and do weed control up there as kind of the cost trade-off instead of billing them. In discussions with them, they indicated they were no longer interested in doing that weed control up on Canfield, which we are fine with. However, the Forest Service does bill us for Kootenay, for their equipment in Canfield, since they are not public safety. And we, as the E911 Fund, or the county, unless the Board wishes to, cannot cover that cost for that equipment from the E911 Fund. So, this is an update in agreement to where CARS is willing to cover that cost instead of doing the weed control. We have in the MOU to not exceed $250 to bill them. They wanted that in there as a safety net for them. But in FY22, the Forest Service billed us $133.38. And that's generally about what they bill. So, it's just an update to change that.
Okay.
And that's for fiscal year '23?
Correct. This would be once signed. The Forest Service does not bill us yet. And we will simply subbill to CARS for that amount.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions?
Okay, I move therefore that we approve the MOU update with CARS, which is the amateur radio organization, for an amount not to exceed $250 for fiscal year '23 with our 911 organization.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. Item 20, and this is the Divco Service Agreement Renewal for 911 and the Sheriff's Office Communication Building, Canfield Butte, Mason Butte, Killarney, and with Divco. So, Colin, again.
Commissioners, Colin McRoy. And yes, this is our annual agreement, a little behind on it. But this is the starting fiscal year October for Divco to do our HVAC maintenance at the sites, communication sites and the 911 Center. This is a budgeted item that we request and funded. And it's just the official signing of those maintenance agreements. The only thing to note is budgeted in both the enhanced fund and the 120 as a share of the 911 Center costs. And so, that is also budgeted in that budget as well.
Any questions?
Nope.
I move that we approve the Divco Service Agreement Renewal, 911 and Sheriff's Office Communications Building, Canfield Butte, Mason Butte, Killarney, slash Divco, slash 911.
Second.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. Item 21, Renewal of MOUs, Kootenay County and Panhandle Health District. And I'm assuming this is for the SWN Network?
Yes.
Okay, Colin?
Commissioners, yes, this is just a straggler on the radio system MOU with Panhandle Health District. There were, had some questions on the MOU that we were just late in getting this one. And it's just the standard agreement for your approval.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the renewal of the MOUs between Kootenay County and Panhandle Health District regarding the radio system. End of motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. Item 22, Board Approval Request for a Quote. And the quote number is 1917004. And it's our Motorola Solutions. And Colin, again.
Commissioners, this is for the Sheriff's Office. I had multiple requests for radio order quotes with both capital and then the approved vehicle purchase. So, instead of doing those individually, we requested to pool those together, which is a total of 50 was approved in capital budget requests for the Sheriff's Office between Patrol and Jail. And then, 45 total for the Cars. So, 95 radios, we put one big request in to Motorola for that order to see what they can do as far as pricing. If we can get any additional discount. In lieu of a cash discount, Motorola offered to throw it, put in additionally, one Apex 8,000 for Patrol, two Apex 4,000s for the Jail, and one, which is their new radio line called the Apex Next Radio, which is equal to roughly a 4% discount. So, same cost for the 95 radios that we would order with those additionally included into the order. Hopefully, my letter explains where all the funding is coming from, unless you would like me to read it out into the record. I can. But so, in total, we would be getting 99 radios. And that's broken down in the letter. That's 15 for, 15 capital budgeted for Patrol with the one included, 30 for the Jail Division for the 4,000s, 5 Apex 8,000s for the Jail with the 2,400s included. And then, there's 45 total mobile radios for the Cars. And those would be, that funding would be coming from the per-approved vehicle project.
So, we couldn't order 91 radios and them give us for free? I mean, we had to do the 99 radios?
We could approach it that way. But generally, we go with what we are approved for and with any additional discount, get additional radios, since we still have more radios to replace in the fleet. This just speeds up our process of, we still, the jails specifically still has a number of radios to be replaced up the old fleet.
Okay. Any questions?
So, you're the expert. Is this a good deal?
This is probably the best deal we're gonna get with Motorola's choice to include free radios. It's more of a, they don't really have an incentive to give a cash discount at this point because they're backordered and they're gonna sell them regardless.
Backorder is a big thing, right?
Yes, backorder is a big thing. I do have, at least Motorola hasn't officially, but I have from them at least on the portables. So, mostly the capital expense, they would like to prep and ship before the end of the year. So, we'll get, hopefully, those fairly fast. The mobiles will take a little bit longer. But at least, they're putting us at the top with this big of an order, so.
All right. Anything else?
No questions.
Okay. Motion?
Ready? I move that we approve the request for Quote 1917004 with Motorola Solutions and the Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. Are you sure you want to leave, Colin? Because probably.
Done for today.
He's good.
Item 23, Board Approval Request. This is the FY23 Amendment to the Food Service Partnership Agreement with our Jail. And Captain Miller?
Good afternoon, Commissioner Stu Miller, for the record. This is our annual amendment to our food service agreement in FY23. Summit Foods gave us a away-from-home CPI of 4.7%, which we budgeted for and has approved through our FY23 budget. And this is just the amendment to get it signed and sealed and delivered. And just a side note to that, when they initially told us in March or in April, when we started our budgeting process, it was 4.7%. When they called me in October and told me they're ready to get our amendment signed, they wanted 8%. And I told them, we budgeted 4.7. So, they said, we'll stick with that.
Okay. Well, good. I think they've done a fairly decent job for us. So, I'm glad that they were willing to do that. So, questions?
None.
Okay, motion?
I move that we approve the fiscal year '23 Amendment to the Food Service Partnership Agreement, as just outlined by Captain Stu Miller. End of motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Item 24, Regents Renewal for 2023. Our Kootenay County Employee Benefit Plan, the Administrative Blueprint with Regents Blue Shield and Human Resources Director Sylvia Proud.
Sylvia Proud, for the record. What I'm presenting to you today is the Regents Renewal for our employee health insurance plans. The blueprint outlines the plan design deductibles that each of us are paying for our health insurance. And there are no changes. We made no changes to the plan for '23. This has been reviewed by legal. And most importance is to thank the Board for not passing the cost of the increased insurance premiums to the employees.
Any questions?
No.
All right, motion?
I move that we approve the Regents Renewal for 2023 with Kootenay County Employees Benefit Plan for the Employee Benefit Plan Admin Blueprint and Regency, Regents Blue Shield of Idaho.
Second.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. Item 25, Contract Renewal, 2023 Regents Administrative Services and Fees, Regents Blue Shield of Idaho. And Ms. Proud?
Sylvia Proud, for the record. The contract has been reviewed by legal. It's for our '23 Regents Admin Services and Fees. There was a slight increase in the per-employee, per-month cost, but that has been budgeted and approved for our calendar year.
No question.
Okay, no questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the contract renewal for fiscal year 2023 with Regents Administrative Services and Fees with Regents Blue Shield of Idaho and as sponsored by our HR Department. End of motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion carries. Item 26. And this is a contract renewal, 2023 Regents Stop Loss Rates and Terms and with Regents of Blue Shield of Idaho.
And again, for 2023, this is the final of Regents contracts that we'll be renewing this year. Have been, this item has been reviewed by legal and it's for our stop loss rates and terms.
Okay, questions? All right, motion?
I move that we approve the 2023 Regents Stop Loss Rates and Terms from Regents Blue Shield of Idaho and Human Resources.
Second.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. Item 27, Financial Budget Changes to ICRAP Auto Deductible and Repair Payment Process. And this is actually not an action item. It's a discussion item. And so, Ms. Falcon, our Finance Director, will lead us in this.
Yes, Brandy Falcon, for the record. I just wanted to put this before the Board today for your questions, thoughts, and feedback. I met with HR, who oversees our risk management, ICRAP compliance processes, as well as accounting and some command staff from the Sheriff's Office to go over our process for paying insurance deductibles when there's a fleet crash. So, if a patrol vehicle is in a crash, for example. So, everyone was on the same page. Sheriff's Office thought it was a great idea. HR thought it was a great idea. We'd like to change it from what, the way it currently is done is if a vehicle is in an accident, the deductible and any repairs is handled by HR and paid out of our liability insurance fund, which we do levy for that amount. We would like to make it so that the departments pay that amount out of their individual B budgets to help each department track how much they are incurring in insurance deductible and repair costs from fleet crashes. So, that's, I'd like to move forward and formalize that in a policy with the help of, I assume, Mr. Ferguson. But I wanted to put that idea in front of you and see if you have any questions, any feedback on that.
I'm good with it. I think it makes sense.
Okay.
It's accountability. It's fine. I'm okay with it.
All right. So, if you're okay, I'll move forward with legal to draft that into a policy for your signatures.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Moving item, to item 28, Riverstone Transit Center Phase 2 Supplemental Agreement with Kaufman Engineers. And is Jody on the line?
This is Kim Riley on the line to take care of this.
All right. Go ahead.
So, this is an agreement with, an amendment to our agreement with Kaufman Engineers for additional construction administration. They had to do some revisions on the grading and landscape to accommodate future sidewalk for an ADA EV charging station. And then, also Hill International, who does the construction administration for us. The total is $20,622.84.
And is this part of contingency in the project? Or is this gonna just be FTA fund balance?
This is our, it's in our current budget for the Transit Center Phase 2. We had budgeted some dollars for contingency and we're still well under there.
Perfect, thank you. Questions?
None.
Okay, motion?
I move that we approve the Riverstone Transit Center Phase 2 Supplemental Agreement with Kaufman Engineers and our MO.
Second.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. So, item 29, Agreement for Non-Emergency Medical Transport with Kootenay Health and our Transit Center. And Kim, this one again?
Yes, thank you, Kim Riley, again, for the record. This is our new four-year agreement with Kootenay Health. They provide non-emergency medical transport. We purchase the vehicles with, at the FTA funds, 5307, 5339, and 5310. And in return, we can use their operational expenses as match.
Okay.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the agreement for non-emergent medical transportation between Kootenay Health and our Resource Management Office using the federal funds as just stipulated. End of motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Motion passes. Item 30, Contract Amendment Number 06719-02. And this is Creative Bus Sales and our RMO Transit. Chad, are you on the line?
I am. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Chad Engel with RMO, for the record. We are seeking a contract amendment with Creative Bus Sales for the purchase of replacement vehicles for our paratransit fleet. Due to supply chain issues and price increases, the price of each of the buses has increased $40,000, which is over 40% increase. In order to keep our fleet in state-of-good repair, we need to amend the original contract to reflect the pricing adjustment. And with the time it has already taken since the start of the process and the time we will still have before possible completion, we have also adjusted the quantity to include one additional bus. So, optimistically, Creative is hoping by next June to see some of the older orders being fulfilled and built, assuming that Ford gets the chassis to them in the first and second quarter of this coming year. Because of this, we have been seeking other options to replace our buses. So, some of those we've looked at are purchasing transit vans, transit cutaways, and even new buses that have already been manufactured, sitting on the lot. But the problem with these vehicles is they would still need modifications before they would work for our purposes. And because of this, we haven't seen a cost savings from trying these other options. So, in order to keep our place in the manufacturing line, we need to amend the contract. And we do have funding available to cover the increase to the contract.
Okay, questions?
Chad, this is Chris. Where's the additional funding coming from?
We have funding that, we have for the 5339, 5310 funding that we had a balance still even before the purchase. So, but for the original contract, we still had funding available for that, so.
And I assume that's federal?
It is. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, motion?
I move that we approve Contract Amendment 06719-02 with Creative Bus Sales and our RMO.
Second.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Okay, motion passes. And item 31, Resolution 2022-68, Surplus Property. This is for water softener, power supply, video arrangement system. And actually, we've got, we can probably handle 31 and 32 together. And that's Resolution 2022-81, which is more surplus property, commercial washers and dryers, both with juvenile detention. Brandy Bradley, are you on the phone?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brandy Bradley, for the record. The first item, Resolution 2022-68, is to surplus the water softener, power supply, and video arraignment system. All three of these items are no longer useful and cannot be repaired and would be taken for disposal. The other Resolution 2022-81 is for commercial washers and dryers. These are coming to the end of their life cycle. And we are replacing them with new ones. So, those would be donated to the Kootenay Humane Society and the Fairgrounds.
Okay, and then, so as far as the fairgrounds goes, you'll need to have a separate resolution, I believe, for that property.
Okay.
Yes. Yep. So, we can approve these two resolutions today, but then, you'll have to come back with another resolution. with another resolution specific to the fairgrounds.
Okay.
Okay, questions?
Motion? I move that we approve Resolutions 2022-68 and -81 to surplus properties, the water softener, power supply, video arraignment system with Resolution 68, and the commercial washers and dryers for juvenile detention, which will require a further resolution as well, and that is number 81. And these are either being surplus or reaching end of life, but either way, they're being surplus. End of motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion passes. And item 33, Board Approval Request, and this is signing a final application for PUD 22-0001, Gaza Ranch Golf and Lake Club. And all this is, is a signing. We would normally handle it on Thursday morning, but we figured it'd be more expedient to handle it now and be able to.
Forgo the meeting.
Yeah, forego the meeting. So are you going to handle this, David, or?
Commissioners, David Callahan, Community Development Director. Yes, this order is prepared in accordance with your decision and ready for your signature.
Okay, do we have the signature here in person, or is it going to be through our automatic system, our on-base?
Automatic, as I recall.
Okay, sounds good. So all I need is a motion to execute order of decision.
You want me to take it, Bill?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I move that we execute the order of decision, which is the signing of the final application for PUD 22-001 for Gaza Ranch Golf and Lake Club, as sponsored by our community development organization. End of motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion passes. And item 34, Board Approval Request, and this is requesting consideration to determine if a special notice permit is or is not required for Lake's Highway District's new maintenance facility. And thank you, Director Callahan.
Commissioners, from time to time, the Land Use and Development Code is not absolutely clear. This is one of those times. The context of this is that Lake's Highway would like to build a new maintenance facility, and the reason I gave you the zoning map is so you could see it's mostly zone commercial. It'd be these top two parcels on the first page. I think you all are familiar with the site. And the Land Use Development Code would normally trigger a special notice review for any use that fronts on a federal highway. That's on the third page of the handout I gave you, and I highlighted it. However, here we have a case where I think the code allows some flexibility, and you'll see it, I highlight it again in that same page, where it goes on to say, "Frontage is the portion of a parcel that adjoins the road used to access the parcel." You can see for yourself on the second page that the frontage in this case is on Hudlow Road. And so in my view, this doesn't rise to the occasion of a special notice, and I think it makes common sense to just let Lake's Highway District go right ahead with a building permit, especially when you consider that the most that a special notice achieves is we typically refer out to the Highway District and the Fire District for their concerns. You have a letter from the Fire District supporting this request as the last page of your handout, and obviously, Lake's Highway District has in their best interest to do the right thing. So I'm hopeful you agree with me that this does not need a special notice permit.
Yes, questions?
No, I think Director Callahan's handled it well.
Questions, Bill?
No.
Okay, yeah, I'm in agreement. I don't think that requiring a special notice is going to do anything productive in this situation, so I would ask for a motion.
I move that we approve the request for consideration to determine that it is not required for Lake's Highway District new maintenance facility.
Second.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you, Director. All right, item 35, and this is just an updated public defender contract, Inland Northwest Law Group, PLLC. We approved a public defense, public defender conflict contract with Mr. Devon Marks, but it actually should have been under his law group's name. So Terry, do you have further information for us?
No, that's about it. This contract is just an update from the one you previously approved, just some internal housekeeping. The original contract was written in Devon's name only. The W-9 he submitted included a firm name, which is what payroll will be using, and so the contract has just been updated to include the firm name and match the W-9 for payroll purposes. Nothing else in the contract has been changed.
Perfect, thank you. Questions?
Uh-huh.
All right, motion?
I move that we approve the updated public defender conflict contract with Mr. Marks under the official organization name of Inland Northwest Law Group, PLLC. End of motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion passes. And we are on item 36, which is an advisory board appointment, Kevin Kirking to the Fair Board with a term ending of January 15, 2024. And Mr. Kirking would be taking the place of.
Is it Melinda?
It is Miranda Hamilton, who has regrettably had to resign from the board. So Jonathan, is there anything else to add?
Nope.
Okay, great. Then I would take a motion.
Go ahead, Bill.
Oh. Yeah, I did that. I move that we approve the advisory board appointment of Kevin Kirking to the Fair Board, term ending in 1/15/2024.
Second.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Commissioner Philios?
Aye.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion carries, and there is no update for the status update pending list, and when there is, I'll give it to you, but at this point, we're still in contract with legal. So that's about it. Public comment? All right, hearing none. It is 2:38 and meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Everybody's.[1774.16]